Commissioner Harrison, your life.
Welcome to a special meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. Prior to tonight's meeting, we'll have an invocation offered by Commissioner Harris, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father God, we stand before you today and ask for your continued guidance as we, you know, travel through these times of uncertainty. And may you continue to provide us with that very guidance in hopes that we find solutions through time. So, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Brady?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Meizer?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
May I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Poole?
Still move.
But a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved. In hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Ms. Briggs, I wonder if you would share with us any communication from the residents regarding tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. We received one item regarding our legislation tonight. It comes from Ms. Sharon Johnson at 1139 Fifth Street. She said in regard to item number four about the expenditures, even though the city manager will be able to spend up to $20,000 without the commission approval if passed, I would like to know if the city manager can write contracts such as service contract for consultants or any other contract that needs to be written for the expenditure without the commission's legislation approval. I don't think the commission should be passing any of these charter amendments without the actual legal ballot language inserted into the legislation that is presented tonight. The full description is missing, but for the fact the commission is up against a deadline and missing an attorney to write out the description, the amendment language is being haphazardly put together.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for that question. We have our new interim law director with us this evening, and I'm going to, I don't mean to speak for Mr. Harris, but I'm going to give him the latitude of responding to Mrs. Johnson's question after he researches that question and respond to her in the future. Can you do that, Mr. Harris?
Yes, Commissioner President.
Are there any other further communications from audience, from the public, Ms. Briggs?
No, that was the only one, Mr. President.
Great. Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various legislation. Can I have a motion to accept these communications?
Still move.
But a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, this is a special meeting of the city commission, and therefore, we do not have, we do not have any elongated agenda. We have five charter review items on the agenda. So, without any haste, I'm going to ask us to move forward with the number one item on our agenda, please. Ms. Briggs.
Item number one is an ordinance providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Sandusky of a proposed amendment to section four of the city charter of the city of Sandusky by reducing the minimum residency requirement for city commission candidates from three years to 18 months and declaring an emergency.
Commissioners, you have before you this ordinance. How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
There been a motion and a second discussion? Any discussion on residency qualifications? Ms. Briggs, will you pull the commission on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number two, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item number two is an ordinance providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Sandusky of a proposed amendment to section six of the charter of the city of Sandusky by establishing the salary of the city commissioners to meet the minimum salary required to qualify as full-service credit with the Ohio Public Employees Retirement System and declaring an emergency.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Commissioner Murray.
Just to address the question from Ms. Johnson, I believe that this language, as it's presented on the ballot, is contained in the legislation. I realize it's not contained in the summary description of the legislation that's in the, that's on the agenda, but if one takes a look at the detail back in the legislation itself, it contains the precise language, as I understand it, that would appear on the ballot.
Thank you, Commissioner Murray. Any other discussion on this ordinance, Commissioners? Ms. Briggs, will you pull the commission on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
See there?
Yes, sorry, yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present to us item number three, please?
Yes, item number three is an ordinance providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Sandusky of a proposed amendment to section 16 of the charter of the city of Sandusky by requiring additional publications of certain legislative actions taken by the city commission by means of online notification and posting in public places designated by the city commission and when publishing in a newspaper by title only and declaring an emergency.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
On reflection, I don't believe that I support this proposed charter change. I think it just takes us in the wrong direction of transparency, and I will be opposing that charter change.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. I have thought long and hard on this, and I know this specific charter change has come up in the past and has not been successful with our electorate for a variety of reasons. But I think one of those reasons is not just the transparency issue, but the other issue is, it is true that not all of our residents have the benefit of an Internet access. And very few of our residents will take the time or make the effort, I will say, to come down to City Hall and pick up a copy of legislation, even when they're keenly interested. That's asking them to do, to make quite an effort to do that. Again, I agree on reflecting on this over the weekend. I think that this is probably the wrong time to narrow, narrow our transparency. I think, if anything, we should be expanding our transparency, and I think that does this, this review probably does just the opposite. So, I am opposed to that also.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I looked at this, too, read it over a few times, bounced it on a few people. I don't know by title only in the newspaper or work. I did not realize until I talked to some other folks, especially older ones, I'm a senior citizen now, that don't have computers, that don't have iPhones, and that they do want to read it, you know, in our copy, and it's going to be available at other places, too, the online. I'm sure if you're tech savvy, you can find it there. But I think it's critical that we do keep it in the register, and I agree with Commissioner Murray that stay out in front of this and be as transparent going forward as possible. So, thank you.
Further discussion, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mike.
I appreciate that the committee went through and thought about this. This is something that comes up to save money every year, every time the charter review committees meet, that would save money, but especially with new, in technology in mind. But I think right now with the economy, Internet costs high, people losing their jobs, and like you say, the elderly and the poor and the high rise of stuff. I'm not sure how many do read it, but I think this would be the wrong time to move forward on this.
Additional discussion, Commissioner. Ms. Briggs, will you pull the commission on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Harris?
No.
Mr. Murray?
No.
Mr. Brady?
No.
Ms. Twine?
No.
Mr. Meizer?
No.
Mr. Waddington?
No.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
No.
Mr. Murray?
No.
Mr. Brady?
No.
Ms. Twine?
No.
Mr. Meizer?
No.
Mr. Waddington?
No.
That ordinance fails. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number four, please?
Item number four is an ordinance providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Sandusky of a proposed amendment to section 25 of the city charter of the city of Sandusky adjusting the expenditure threshold requiring competitive bidding and city commission approval and declaring an emergency.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 14, section 14 of the city's charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
Wasn't outlined here, but this is up to 25,000, correct?
That's correct. We're moving from 10,000 to 25,000.
Okay.
Right, there is, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
Yes, there is no mention of that threshold in the title of the legislation, but if you go to the actual legislation later on in our materials, you'll see it is the 25,000 that we discussed at the last meeting. And this, this, I just want to point out, this legislation is a little bit counterintuitive. It sounds as though, you know, we would be getting less competitive bidding, we would be getting less, perhaps, perhaps inferior pricing. And exactly the opposite is true when you dig down into it. What we have heard and seen is that we have bidders that simply say it's too complicated to go through this entire process, and so we don't get the same number of bids that we would get. And we, by moving to 25,000, it's important to note, we would still be only half of what every single government around us is at. And so, I think that this is a timely move, so I will support it.
I want to point out, it is true that we are going from 10,000 to 25,000 on the, on the expenditures, but we are going from 10,000 to 50,000 on the competitive bidding threshold. So, there are really two figures in this legislation. Competitive bidding goes from 10,000 to 50,000. Expenditures by department heads go from 10,000 to 25,000. Additional discussion, Commissioners? Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number five? And this is a, this is a multiple, multiple choice ordinance. I think I will allow Mr. Harris to preempt, do Ms. Briggs, on reading that ordinance. I would ask Mr. Harris to give us some marching orders on how we're going to handle, handle this, this item number five, and then I will ask Ms. Briggs to read the, read the specific ordinance.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner President. And this may answer Ms. Johnson's question even further in terms of continuity, in terms of the drafting of these ordinances and legislation between my predecessor, Trevor Aberger, working on this in conjunction with outside counsel at Squires, who I have conferred with both Trevor and Squires last week and even up to today, and reviewed the legislation myself. But what you will be presented with on item five is an amendment to section 27 of the city charter with respect to the civil service chief, minimum qualifications for both fire and police. You are going to be, as commission, be presented with two options. There is a, the first piece of legislation is an ordinance that addresses both the police and the fire in the same ordinance. And then option B is to split out police and fire into two separate ordinances in terms of the qualifications required for both of those departments. Ms. Briggs can read the ordinances, however, prior to someone making a motion, we need a simple majority from the commission as to which ordinance someone wants to move and have adopted pursuant to section 14 of the city charter.
Mr. Harris, so I understand you correctly, then, we, I, should my instruction to Ms. Briggs be to read the ordinance that combines both police and fire ordinance and then ask for, if we have a simple motion on that, then we proceed?
Yeah, if you, the truth is, if you, if that motion fails, the assumption is that you guys want to proceed with separate ordinances. So, my advice would be to read the first ordinance, ask if the simple majority wants to adopt that or move for that, and then we'll go through the normal section 14 process.
I understand. Ms. Briggs, will you then accommodate us by reading the first, the first ordinance, which is the combination of fire and police?
I will, Mr. President. Item number five is an ordinance providing for submission to the electors of the city of Sandusky of a proposed amendment to section 27 of the charter of the city of Sandusky by amending the minimum qualifications to be considered for appointment to the chief of the department or division of police and for the chief of the department or division of fire and declaring an emergency.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meizer.
I'm going to vote no on this, because I'd prefer to see the two split, if we go with option B.
Additional discussion, Commissioners? There are no further discussion, we will ask Ms. Briggs to take, call the roll on the motion, then.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
No.
Mr. Waddington?
No.
That simple motion is passed, Mr. Harris? That required just a simple majority?
Simple majority to, to propose that charter amendment as one ordinance, but you still need five votes to get it on the charter change and submit it to the Board of Elections.
So, at this, at this point, Mr. Harris, that, the combination of both fire and police is still viable because it had a, had a simple majority, and now we move to, we move to a motion on that?
Correct.
I'll ask for a motion on the combination of fire and police.
Point of order.
Commissioner Murray.
I, I believe that that's what the motion and second were about.
Right.
So, we, we know what the outcome is going to be here, but we've had the motion, we've had the vote on the motion, and I think it's now appropriate to just call the roll on the ordinance, which I think, and telegraph to go down.
Correct. So, Ms., we will call a roll on the ordinance of the combination, and I think we know the outcome of that, but we'll call the roll to make it official.
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll, please, on the ordinance?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
No.
Mr. Waddington?
No.
That ordinance fails. We will move now to the ordinance that deals specifically with fire.
So, this is an ordinance providing for submission to the electors of the city of Sandusky of a proposed amendment to section 27 of the charter of the city of Sandusky by amending the minimum qualifications to be considered for appointment to the chief of the department or division of fire and declaring an emergency.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I favor expanding the pool of applicants for both the chief of police and the fire chief. I think that the ordinance was written in a, in a different time, in a different era, when we had a much more stratified leadership structure in both organizations. That has been significantly flattened, and we see today that there are qualified candidates for both police and fire with decades of experience who are ineligible because of an antiquated provision in our charter. I trust the, I realize that some people say, well, you could just have a sergeant become the police chief. That's not always inappropriate. There are some fantastic sergeants in other departments, I'm thinking particularly the Erie County Sheriff's Office, who have those qualifications, and I trust two things. One, the search committee to sort through who is qualified and who is not, who has sufficient experience and who does not. And second, I trust the city manager to make that same evaluation. So, for that reason, I support this legislation. Thank you.
Additional discussion, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
As I mentioned at the last commission meeting, I do, I also agree that we should be able to expand the hiring pool to include those cities and communities who may have a different structure than what we have in the city of Sandusky. I am always supportive of hiring and promoting from within, but I also look at it from a standpoint of increasing our diversity pool and the outreach to other areas that will allow us to get the best possible candidate as possible. So, I do support this legislation. And I, I also support separating out both the fire and the police and ultimately letting the public determine the final outcome.
Additional discussion, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meizer.
Yeah, I'm going to vote no based on Chief Wilcox, the fire chief's recommendation to vote no on this. I think they just went too broad on the applicants, and this basically includes more, this could include qualifications over half of firefighters in the state of Ohio. So, I don't mind expanding it, I just think they went a little broad on this one, so, and I'll just leave it at that.
Commissioner Meizer, you and I have had some discussions regarding this, and I appreciate your, and respect your, your opinion. I'm wondering, is your objection to any specific rank that you don't think belongs in there? Like, for instance, is, are you okay with lieutenants being qualified for chief or captains qualified, but perhaps not a fire marshal? Is that, is that?
I would, I wouldn't, I got help here.
You got your hands full.
I, yeah, I got five of them over here today, so.
I don't envy you.
I'm sorry. I, I think a lot of departments with fire marshals, I mean, that, that's a 40-hour class.
Yes.
And that's a criteria that's met by many entry-level firefighters. And lieutenants, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I don't, I'm not totally against lieutenants doing it, I just think that a fire marshal just really doesn't have the qualification. If it was a fire marshal that had experience on the fire ground in emergency medical services, yes, but that would, that person would also carry a rank of lieutenant captain, assistant chief, battalion chief, deputy chief or chief. So, it wouldn't be just based, that's like saying an engineer. An engineer is a training criteria that can run an engine. So, let's, I mean, we can include engineers, we include a lot of different names and qualifications on a department. It's not technically ranked in the, in the structure that would be able to handle a disaster and take charge. And when Chief Wilcox talked last week, I think what we do is we get tied up in technical jargon. If you're, if you're in the service, you, you use jargon that people don't understand. He used the word command, but he said, he recommends just keeping it to people command. That means being in charge.
Right.
He, what, what we mean by command is, you should be in charge of something once in your career before, before you're elevated to the fire chief's, or even eligible to take fire chief's tasks.
I guess the question I'm asking, Commissioner Meizer, is, are you stuck on the, the fire marshal being included in here? And if you are, if, is that something that you would, you would consider an amendment to this, to remove the qualification as fire marshal for chief? And would you support, would support that? Are you, do you believe that lieutenants and captains should be, or should be considered for a chief's position?
Oh, sure, if we, if we could do that now, I'd make an amendment to that, yeah.
Law Director Harris, I'll turn to you and find out if, is that possible to amend this, to remove the specific qualification of a fire marshal if Commissioner Meizer so chose?
That is possible, and this rules would, you would have to make a motion to amend the proposed legislation as if you would amending any other proposed legislation. It would still need a supermajority to pass.
It will need a supermajority to pass, I understand. Is, is there anyone willing to make that motion to amend this legislation, to remove the title of fire marshal, so we can move forward with this legislation?
I, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meizer.
Yes, I would like to make the motion to remove the title of fire marshal from the, from the legislation.
Second.
But a motion and a second on that amended legislation discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I was going to be a no vote, because I'm concerned, Sandusky's a small composite of a larger community, and with us cutting manpower and going forward, I don't have a crystal ball. If we have to make more cuts, I know it's going to be difficult choices, but it's about safety of the community, too. And I had conversations, several conversations with Mr. Meizer and how to go forward. I will support the amendment now going forward. Thank you.
Additional discussion, Commissioners, on the amended motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I, I understand Commissioner Meizer's position as well as what Chief Wilcox expressed at the last commission meeting when we were, when I requested some clarification as to what his position was.
what his position was. I still believe that we, I don't want us to get stuck on looking at this right now in one moment in time. I believe that the, the police, or I'm sorry, yeah, the, I'm sorry, the fire chief search committee, especially the ones that I've sat on in the past, will do their due justice and diligence in vetting out the people who do apply for the, for the fire chief position. I do, I am leaning toward, again, opening up the pool of applicants, and it doesn't mean that everyone that applies is going to get an interview or a final pick to be part of that interview process. Again, I don't want us to get stuck on right now looking at this. This will be legislation that will, if passed, will be in effect at least for the next 10 years. And so things will change, things will adjust, but I do have enough confidence in an interview team to properly assess and vet the experience of the applicants, and those who will rise to the top, will rise to the top based upon their years of experience. A lot of that does go into also dealing with diverse communities and a number of different things, their educational level, how they interact again with others. So I think, I don't want to get us stuck on terminology. I believe, Mr. Commissioner Meizer, you mentioned something about that early in your discussion. I may be using the wrong phraseology, but you mentioned that, that Chief Wilcox kind of got stuck on some terminology, but I don't want us to get stuck on that either. And so I do support the amendment that you're requesting, but I do want to emphasize the fact that I prefer to have a pool of applicants that we can properly vet and meet a number of different qualifications.
Additional discussion, Commissioners, on the amended motion. Ms. Briggs, will you pull the commission on the amended motion?
Commissioner, President Brady, just as a point of order, we'll, we'll do an amendment, I mean, you guys have to do a roll call on the actual amendment, and then we'll reread it as presented.
Exactly.
Okay.
We need a roll call on the amended motion, LaDuna.
Correct.
Great.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That, that legislation is now amended to delete the rank of fire marshal, and shall we ask Ms. Briggs to reread the legislation deleting that, that, that rank?
Yes.
So just to clarify, you want me to reread the ordinance?
As presented through the amendment.
This is an ordinance providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Sandusky of a proposed amendment to section 27 of the charter of the city of Sandusky by amending the minimum qualifications to be considered for appointment to the chief of the department or division of fire and declaring an emergency.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed? Commissioner Meizer.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. I presume that you've discussed enough on this, so I'm going to ask Ms. Briggs to call the roll on the motion, please.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
And Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, if you would read what I will call item B of item five, item 5B, police.
Yes, Mr. President. Item 5B is an ordinance providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Sandusky of a proposed amendment to section 27 of the charter of the city of Sandusky by amending the minimum qualifications to be considered for appointment to the chief of the department or division of police and declaring an emergency.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance, item 5B, under suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ladies and gentlemen, there are no other items on this agenda. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.